I am the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. I want to remind you that this is a public hearing, it is being recorded and broadcast on Comcast Channel 8 and RCM Channel 2. Please silence any other cell phones, laptops, electronic devices. We're actually going to do this hearing a little bit differently. So I've been in touch with many folks in the room along with my colleagues, Councilor Jackson and Councilor McCarthy. Because today is the wake of an officer we lost recently, out of respect for those who wanted to attend that funeral, I told BPD as well as the Social Justice Task Force to not attend this hearing. We're going to schedule a follow-up hearing where we will have representatives from BPD as well as the Social Justice Task Force with us on that day. We lost two officers. So we can actually, to start, I would like to quickly take a moment of silence for Officer Michael Baker and Sergeant Detective Richard Glanzey. So because we're going to do this a little differently, I did not want to cancel this because I knew a few folks from the public were going to come. And in the spirit of the community meetings we've been having related to body cameras, I wanted to give folks an opportunity to come forward and actually testify. And you can do that in several ways. One, you can come forward and say, simply, you're going to support body cameras and explain why. You can come forward and say you have some thoughts on privacy or retention or things as we are contemplating and developing a policy for the six-month pilot program. So I'm simply going to do public testimony. But before I do that, I'd like to acknowledge, Council Madam Madder has also joined us. But I would also acknowledge Council Tito Jackson and allow him to say a few words as the sponsor of this ordinance.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I think this is a critical issue and a critical time for the city of Boston. The city of Boston is known for community policing, but I think it's absolutely critical that we have 21st century community policing, and that being able by body cams worn by our police officers. I think it is to note that the Boston Police Department has actually had about $37 million in settlements over the past seven years. So this is actually not only something that looks towards accountability as well as transparency on the behalf of the community, but I also think it is to the benefit of officers to have body cams worn in the interactions that they have with the public. There has been a lot of back and forth about whether we would, we should, or will do this. I am encouraged that we will be doing this. And I believe that not only we should push forward with the pilot, but that we should scale this program so that it's universally, ubiquitously worn, that these are worn by all of our police officers. I think it is critical that we hear the specific aspects of a plan relative to when they should be turned on, what instances they should be turned on, how the data, which thousands of hours of data will be, what will be collected, who is going to have access to that data. There are some really important questions that are present. And I want to give props to the organization BP Cat, who has really done a good job at researching and making sure that this information has been in the forefront. And so then, it'll, one of the organizers actually here. So I am encouraged that we continue to push forward with this, but I think it's absolutely critical that we have Commissioner Evans and Chief Ross before us soon to have the conversation about how we implement, how long we're going to implement, how many officers will be involved, and then how we look forward to scaling. And I just want to note, this is not punitive. This does not upfront to the Boston Police Department. I believe this really is about us being accountable and transparent to the people that we serve and with the over $400 million budget that is the Boston Police Department. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. I want to acknowledge Council Josh Latham has also joined us, Council McCarthy and the others.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank Council Jackson for bringing this very important subject to the floor. But I'd also like to thank and congratulate you, Council, for chairing the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. You've held meetings for Boston. It's been unbelievably positive conversation between residents and police and elected officials going through a lot of the information and the scenarios that we're receiving to craft this policy right and do it once and do it right. My father always said, measure twice, camera once. And I think it's a wonderful job you're doing, which I look forward to continuing to hear more thoughts and ideas on this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ballady, who will say a few words? Council Zink?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And you and Council Jackson calling this hearing. I think it's important that, as we've had a long discussion about this, and I know we've talked about this pilot for some time, I think it's great that the mayor, Commissioner Evans, and the Boston Police Department are implementing our program. Because as Council McCarthy said, we want to make sure we get this right, we want to make sure that not only are we holding ourselves, our city, our police department accountable, but also that we're going to make sure that any new procedures, new equipment, that's the police department's mission of public safety and protecting all of our civil rights. Because with any new, I think pilot is a great idea, and we have to work out the king so that we can eventually extend this, I believe, citywide to make sure, bring us along. We have the technology, we have the ability, and there's a lot of folks that we've seen across this country who are having cameras on on police officers, it's been very effective. And I'm thinking, I'm excited to see it in Boston, and we're fortunate that we have a police department that is well-known for their community policing, well-known for their interactions with the community. And we've not come to this out of crisis, which where many other cities, I think, have come to the body camera debate. We've come to that in a place of strength, in a place of inclusion, and I think it's exciting to continue working on this. Thank you for your leadership on this issue. I know, just from my Twitter feed, how active you have been during the hearing around the city along with Council McCarthy and others. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Zink. So like I briefly explained, we're simply going to use this hearing as an opportunity to have folks who have checked off the box and want to testify to come up. But I promise and pledge to the folks in the room as well as residents of the city of Boston that we will do a follow-up hearing sometime this month, later in the month. We'll work out dates so that BPD can come. But we also, of course, always want to be respectful, particularly for the losses that took place this week. But I think that's within the instance. So let's jump right in. Now, I actually want to start with Shigun. And Shigun, if she was here with you, that'd be great. If not, Shigun, why don't you come forward? I want to also acknowledge that Council Michael Flaherty has also joined us. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, Councils. Great to see everyone again for this issue. Again, also, I want to extend that Shakira cannot be here tonight, so she wishes that she could. And also, I want to extend our condolences to the Baker family, the air officer who passed the last.
Thank you.
And also, understand why the Commissioner and the Chief cannot be here tonight. So all I'm saying is, actually, just scribbling down a few words, was that I understood the sentiment that we wanted to have this hearing tonight in order to respect people's time. But I myself find it a little disrespectful to hold the hearing only because we are here in a chamber speaking to ourselves. I think, you know, since last week, Commissioner wasn't able to attend the hearings, excuse me, the meetings, that it would be beneficial for him to hear what we have to say as opposed to meeting in the hand, to essentially have a fourth community meeting. I just don't find it advantageous to anyone. And I was actually reminded of the Chinese proverb, when I was thinking about this, which is to talk much and arrive nowhere, it's the same as pilot nature to catch a fish. And I think that we've been climbing one earred wood when it comes to this discussion. You know, so I'm hoping that the next hearing will be a bit more substantive, and that it happens before the pilot program begins, and that we're able to discuss policy, not just questions that we have, but something that the task force and the Commissioner have come up with so that residents who do, or who are able to make it, are able to add their critique and their feedback on something that's in front of them. So I guess that's all, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I will say this, in most of the testimony, I would just allow folks to speak, but I think Shigun and I would talk, and Tito could talk. I think where we may disagree is two things. One, I'm a firm believer that when it comes to developing policy, particularly the policy, that we should get out into the community first, that we should take thoughts and ideas back before we actually put out a code policy. And then I think the second step should be, once we take those thoughts, those concerns, those ideas, we use them to actually inform a policy. And then we come back with that to have further discussions. So I see this as twofold. I think the community meetings so far, we had three of them, have been quite useful. I have BP Cat's policy, which is good. I have ACLU's policy, which is a little different. I have a new policy from other municipalities, including one from the city of Methuen, where they did a pilot program. So we're reaching out far and wide to get as many policies, but particularly thoughts and concerns and ideas from actual residents, actual scenarios, to inform a policy. So we agree, we disagree a little bit there, but thank you for being here, Shigun, and thank you for your advocacy. The next person I'm going to call out, I think, is Alex Marthews. If I'm saying that correctly? Thank you. If you could just say your name and if you have any affiliation, then.
Yes. My name is Alex Marthews. I'm the president of Digital Fourth, which is a Massachusetts-based civil liberties organization. We have been the people who have been trying to lead the implication of implementation of the statewide body cams mandate through a bill, H2170, that we had introduced in the state legislature this session. We have been very supportive of the excellent work that Shigun and the Boston Police Camera Action Team have been doing. And we're very grateful to you, Council Cantor and Council Jackson, and the other councilors for all your time and attention to this issue. We're glad that a body cam's pilot is happening. And, but we kind of feel a little frustrated in the process because there are so many police departments across the nation that have embraced body cams' enthusiasm, that have worked with the unions and the community ahead of time to figure out good policies. But this doesn't appear to be one of those communities. Commissioner Evans seems like he's having to be dragged into this, his number is white with the strain of holding on to pass PACs, which are never acceptable. He could have engaged as community members were pressing him to, two years ago on this topic, and could have taken seriously the BP Cat policy and the ACLU policy that had already been developed and already on the table. Instead, it appears that he's conveying to the press that this is all terribly complicated and there are all sorts of serious issues that have not been thought out, about how footage should be used, when the cameras should be on or off, the right of the public to access the footage. But whether or not he has been willing to think these things out, other people have. BP Cat, the ACLU of Massachusetts, the Harvard Black Door Students Association, Digital Fourth, we've done our own work on this, and have consulted broadly with stakeholders on what good policies should look like. So we're in a better situation than the press is painting. We don't have to reiterate what we do. And as you've been pointing out, there are policies in other cities, even within Massachusetts, that we can be looking at. Commissioner Evans has only given this pilot, he says, because he hopes it will prove Boston doesn't need body cams. But as one astute observer has put it, this is like doing a pilot of seat belts in the hope it will prove that people don't need seat belts because nobody dies during the pilot. And somebody who believes they are really not needed is not going to advise a good policy. Bad policy returns cameras into purely internal tools, with footage released only when it corroborates officer accounts of events and facilitates convictions of citizens. Good policy leads to accountability on both sides. And we have here, from a national group, a one-page entitled "What a Good Body Cam's Policy Looks Like," which I encourage for your attention.
Can you leave us with the camera?
We certainly will. I'll leave you with many. When body cams were adopted in the Alto California, the police chief handled things a little differently. Chief Farrar worked to get officer binding by working with police officer union representatives to craft a joint policy before implementing the pilot. There was frequent and direct discussion with officers to address their concerns, ensuring a smooth transition of little to no resistance from officers. According to Chief Farrar, the program began to pick up steam when officers witnessed instances where officers themselves were exonerated from complaints made against them, partly evidence provided by body cams. So that is an example of the issue. And as today, we're hardly here. Has Commissioner Evans brought them to the table to discuss how this will work? Or is he trying behind closed doors to hammer out something that will then be presented to the community as a dumb deal? Where did the body cams represent a change in work and conditions? And that that will have to be part of the collective bargaining process if this is to go forward? We know this. But I know that at the state level at least, many legislators are waiting, they're afraid of what the unions will say, and so don't do anything in case the unions happen to agitate. We have a chance here for Boston to have a model policy on body cams, better than the ones passed elsewhere. And I just thank you for holding this hearing, and I hope it represents real progress in working on the grooming test to what we turn the body cam's policy will be.
Thank you. One follow-up question. One, if you could leave a copy of that, I'd love to have it for you. Do you have, does Digital?
Fourth.
Does Digital Fourth have a policy of their own, or are they secretaries to the BP Cat? They think that that's a good one?
Yep, that's all. So what a statewide bill does is to set minimum standards and constraints for the policies that police departments might then pass. So the bill itself doesn't go into exhaustive detail always, but it very does go into some detail about, say, the minimum quality of the body cameras purchased, certain circumstances where body cameras would have to be turned off. And we consulted extensively with state legislators on what those circumstances should be. And it, and so it's a fair bit of work, and I recommend it to your attention.
I have it, but thank you. And thank you for being here.
No problem.
And you will stay connected with us, as we set the date for a follow-up.
That will be awesome.
I will say this, I know Reverend Scott is in the audience, and he's a member of the Social Justice Task Force, he's also a Social Justice Task Force, he's also a clergy member, he's also a district board president, and I want to acknowledge him as well as Representative Holmes, who's here. They have been attending the community meetings and expressing support. But I want to at least say one thing about Commissioner Evans. When I said at some of the community meetings, and I'm saying it to this audience because some folks weren't at those community meetings, in that that was, the community meetings were spearheaded by this committee as well as the Social Justice Task Force, not Commissioner Evans. I took the lead on saying that we needed to actually be in community, frankly, outside of City Hall, to have these meetings and dialogues and conversations. Commissioner Evans, to his credit, has put together the Social Justice Task Force. At the next hearing, those members will be here, not all of them, but hopefully many of them will come, so folks can see that they are truly members of the community. We will also put on an extensive list of who those members are. And there are many members of the Social Justice Task Force who don't agree with Commissioner Evans, who don't agree with his assessment. I think Reverend Scott had his own ideas and expressed at the meeting. But there are many who have different perspectives. There are public defenders, there are clergies, there are former prosecutors, there are representatives of the interlaced community, you name it. So we will make sure that they will also be present at the next hearing that we have. I want to now call, is it Muska? Ms. Ince? Please come down, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. So my name is Melissa Nastri, and I'm a member of the Boston Police Camera Action Team. But I also come for you today as an internee and as an educator. And I just wanted to tell a little bit of a story that I experienced when I was a law student. And the reason I bring this up is, I was here in October, and there was some confusion about whether or not Boston even had a problem with police misconduct. And so I came before you today to tell you this story. When I was a third-year law student at Suffolk, I was a Marshall Reddington Constitutional Literacy Fellow. And one of the things that I had to do was teach constitutional law to seniors. And I was lucky enough to be a Jeremai Burke High School door tester.
At the district four school, I have to have.
Oh, wonderful, yeah. And I have a story that I'll never forget. When I was teaching the Fourth Amendment, you know, stop-up seizure, I asked my students, just kind of casually, not expecting it to be a big deal, have any of you ever been stopped by the police? And I was expecting maybe a few hands to go up. And this single hand went up, and that totally stopped my lesson plan. And we instead spoke about each student's experience. And it was absolutely happened to children 16, 17, and 18-olds. So if there's any question whether Boston has a problem with police misconduct, I know an entire classroom of students that would answer that if they were standing at it. That's it.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing that. Carl Williams?
I brought some copies, some official pieces, so you could be, I think I have my copies for her.
And I would encourage folks, if you came in, you should have the front table here, we like to include copies of BP Cat and the documents. So please take those on your way out if you have them. Thank you for all being here.
Thank you.
And you will also have a follow-up.
I'm sorry?
You will have a follow-up here.
Certainly. Sir, my name is Carl Williams. I work for the American Civil Rights Union of Massachusetts, the Stat Attorney Board on Our Virtual Justice Issues, both reportedly as a district car, very new, maybe 10 weeks at district four with it, and previously a Michigan resident, represented by Josh, I think. A long-time resident of the city of Boston. So thank you for having this hearing, also thank you for our community hearings. And I want to say that I'm here in support of a body on camera program for the Boston Police Department, in the important cases having the proper policies and procedures to ensure police accountability and to protect Boston's public rights. And I think it's critical to really set the stage of why these conversations are happening here and why they're happening nationwide. And that is for one reason, the reason why this discussion started, and that is for accountability. People across the country, I think it started beginning in 2014, in the shooting death, the police shooting of Mike Brandon Ferguson, people all across the United States stood up, took to the streets, took to the internet, took to forums like this to start demanding transparency and police accountability across the country. And that's something that's happened across Massachusetts, and it's something that's happened here in Boston. People are taking this stand to say that we're demanding that our officers are more accountable and have more accountability at our police departments generally. And body cameras have been, from the beginning of that movement, body cameras have been a key piece of that discussion, a key piece, a way to ensure, not to fully ensure, to encourage more accountability. And we know the NRC, Boston, the Boston Police Camera Action Team, ACLU, the Black Law Students at Harvard have all come out and sort of weighed in on this in various, and community residents, right? So I think it's a fair assessment to say that at the previous hearing, the three community meetings, and this, folks that we've heard from today, there is very widespread community support for the, you know, not just voluntary, but across the Boston Police Department, for body on cams or officers that are counted and called, you know, as we learned, in terms of the Fourth Amendment counts, engaging people in the street, traffic stops, and the rest. I'm going to skip a bunch of this, I think. There's some specific points that I really want to get to. But there's been a lot of discussion that, about what the correct documentation was. And if we have a proper documentation, it really protects people on both sides of the country, protects police, and it protects the citizenry of people in the city of Boston. And there's been a lot of studies, I would mention, folks from BP Cat mentioned those in that sense of the documentation. And there are a lot of policies that exist, and I'll say, men, if not every single one of the questions that have been raised before, are answered by policies. That doesn't mean that that's the end-all, exactly. Should a leash and policy be three months? Should it be six months? Should it be nine? Should it be one? There are a lot of legal reasons to make it longer, because perhaps something is not deleted, there are rules. Or if they're shorter, it's a lot less expensive, right? And that's also in terms of privacy, if it's deleted, you know, someone doesn't have to worry about that, it's a very embarrassing thing, being out in public. So those are parts of the debate, but there are things that, that part of the debate, I really want to see that part of the debate saying, is three months good? How expensive is that company? Is nine months good? Is that enough time for someone, if they have an incident and maybe arrested on it, to find out, you know, hey, I'm out now, and we need to talk to some public defender? And this is people on the Social Justice Task Force can address the issues. But I think stated briefly, the answers to a lot of the questions, and even the questions that you, Council Jackson had, I think are answered by some of these. First is what we look at, right? And officers should record, I'm actually just sort of preparing this and saying, it's like you're reading. Right? So 90% of, and this is me, my, which I was a public defender in Dorchester, my career for seven years, and I have hundreds of folks, I'm dating a thousand criminal acts in the city. And officers do this, everyone knows this. You're like, this is car 41, I just pulled someone over, I'm going to check to see who's on. But you walk up to the car, you see what happens, you get a ticket, you arrest a person, you say, hey, you shouldn't have crossed the road. You come back to the car, I checked, I arrested a person, and you put call it code, you hang up. Similarly, you get a call, you say this domestic violence at 552 Massachusetts Avenue, go check it out, same thing, you call the car, the wire responding, I'm going to go check it out, see what happened, there's an arrest, there's a summoning that happens, there's not an arrest, you go back to your car, and you have a close-up, you say, I did it, it's done, call it code, and that's, that thing's over. It's nearly identical with a body cam. For that incident, the same time you're calling, I'm going to go check it out, click, click. It's just one more click. And it's not going to record your private conversation about your spouse, and having a urble with your partner, it's not going to record you in the bathroom, it's not going to record this pretty horrible, as a lot of people have said. It's incident encounters, basically, it's incident encounters. Sometimes when things are out on the street, something happens I didn't expect, someone throws a rock at them, what happened? And maybe in that instance, you're going to want to record that, because something is going to happen, you say, hey, this should be documented. And sometimes that happens, sometimes it won't. But essentially, what should be recorded are incident calls, service calls. And what should be recorded are sensitive information, we're writing in private spaces unless there's civilian consent. And I'll say a really easy way to think about that for lawyers in the room is, it's like a warrant, right? When you go to someone's door, you knock on the door, the question should be asked, I have a camera, I'm going to come into your house, I will need your consent to report that. And that is going to be a camera. If the person says yes, or if the person says no, you say, hell, you turn it off. That's very similar to lay a warrant to your partner. Someone says, no, I don't consent to coming in my house, and you go to the warrant, it can't come in. So I think that's a strong power. What to do with the video? Police officers should be permitted to review body camera footage after they write their initial recording. And police departments should promptly delete video following a short detention period, as we said, that can be very, that's a good point, but currently it's only six months. But police officers should not be able to review the video to write their, I think that's a part of the paper, it shouldn't be to make you remember what you saw, you should remember what you remember, right? Not things that the camera. And then lastly, what to do with policies violating police officers? Should be disciplined for violating camera policies, justice data, and other rules. And police officers should not be subject to discipline for minor department infractions that happen, that happen when you report it from body cams. So I think those are the really important points. And I'm going to quote Council Jackson, say, "We need 21st century community policing." I really like that. Can I adopt that? We're talking about community policing, this is twenty-first century community policing. People want it, it is very, we have done a whole, if you were to ask me, it looks like it's ninety, ninety-five percent support across the city purpose. People really want to come out, people want to do it. And I'll just say this to sort of leave the Boston flag, it's like, we're a city champions, we're a city of technology, we're a city of absolute sports legends, and we can win it all those things. This is an easy thing to do, and we have a policy, we can do it, we can get it right.
Thank you, Carl. Not only for being here tonight and for the policy, but also for coming to the community meetings, you as well as Rashawn Hall, who's also here, I appreciate it. And this will be a continued dialogue. I want to quickly acknowledge Counselor, President is here. And just a friendly reminder, we definitely have a follow-up hearing soon. I want to also read a letter from Counselor Alisa Salm George, who put it here. Counselor Campbell, I regret that I'm unable to attend today's Public Safety and Criminal Justice Hearing on document number zero three five six regarding Boston Police Department pilot program for body worn cameras. Today is the birthday of my triplets, and I am celebrating their entry into double digits. I have been happy to participate in what was a productive and enlightening community process with Counselor Campbell. I support the body worn camera pilot program, look forward to the process of creating the policy, to thorough efficient training, to a smooth implementation of the pilot. Last, I feel it's important that the policy is dynamic and is written so that it can be revisited and revised at different intervals as the city and its residents change. I look forward to working with my colleagues in the council to support or raise awareness of this program and promote its benefits. I will closely review all testimony given here today and hope to contribute to any future conversations. Thank you sincerely, Counselor Alisa Salm George. And I have Ashton Brown. Thank you for being here.
Good afternoon. My name is Ashton Brown, I'm here representing the Boston branch of the NWCP. And I just want to start by thanking you, Chairman Campbell, for your leadership in the series of meetings that have occurred in the city, as well as this time, this week's here today, as well as City Councilor, Counselor Jackson, for this ordinance. I'm gonna give my remarks shortly, because I am looking forward to Yes, yes, yes. To our follow-up conversation on this. But I do want to reiterate our support for this ordinance. I want to particularly highlight, as we go forward with the pilot program, that we have an unfiltered record of interactions, that's what we're looking for. Something that can speak to the kinds of complaints that we get in our branch office on a weekly basis. Things that are not necessarily always coming down to crime law or crime data. I think as the Commissioner has highlighted, that oftentimes these interactions are short, they are one-off stops, if you will. And so those are the kinds of complaints that we are receiving in our office. And so those are the kinds of things we want to look at, they're not necessarily rooted in a crime per se, but that we want to look at these different interactions that are happening to folks in the community. We also are wanting to really push and advocate for a pilot that will be as robust as a full-fledged, long-term program. Something that would include all of the aspects of discipline, including at all the different ranges of technology that we can, that we can have at our disposal. We don't want to just run a program, a pilot program, for the sake of running a technology or testing a device. We really want to see this pilot program be robust, one that has, has all of the aspects of policy that we would expect that would come with a long-term program. And so those are my remarks, just as brief as they are for right now. We certainly look forward to future conversations on this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashton, for being here. And I will say, we'll stay in touch with you regarding the follow-up hearing. And I think why we're being very intentional about taking time and developing this policy and not rushing it, is for what you just said. It's not simply about a pilot program, we think about doing this long-term, it should be something robust. It also incorporates the ideas not only of the NWCP, ACLU, BPCAT, and so many others. So thank you for being here. I don't have anyone else listed right now who's wants to offer public testimony. If you do, please come forward, you can go on either side of each, this podium on the right or one on the left, just come forward. And just to remind our folks that we have a new date, you will have a notice sooner than later, so folks can plan accordingly. Thank you. How are you doing? If you could just say your name for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Mark Mallow.
Good to see you, Mark.
The Mark Holmes?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, Mark Mallow, my people. I am a member of the mayor's council on the rest of my disability. I'm also a working for the National Mental Health. I have a distrust for the police, period. So my question is, who is policing all this? How do we know that they can't rewind that? Is there a way that we can make sure that instead of having the police watch over it, that there's a separate organization? As I understand it, from my experience, the police always take care of the police. They always seem, something always seems to be missing. Is there gonna be a way that we can see if a piece of thing is missing? What's the ramifications of that? If an individual was trying to hide something, is there gonna be a punishment that they know anytime that there's a punishment? Does it hide what should be hidden? I don't know. I do like it. I think there are some issues about privacy, and when it should be turned on and off. But my biggest issue is, I think it would be between erasing, rewinding, or what they do to hide it. You know, I know inherently, you have problems with police doing what they want to do. I just want to make sure that if they're gonna do it, that it stays for the impartial person is the one that does the rewinding and erasing. How long do we have to hold this data footage? Are we gonna be able to have six months, three months, two days? These are things that they may do, because some problems will arise until a week later, when the person gets out of jail, and if they only have a week of storage, then it's gone. It's gone. So people, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you very much, Erin.
No. No, thank you for being here. And I will say, these are the very questions and so many more that have been raised at the three community meetings we've had so far, in different scenarios. And one thing that's been clear is we don't have it all figured out. So for example, one of the questions that came up was about access. Who has access to the footage after the recording? It should be DPD, it should be, or it should be a third-party vendor. And the possibility of using a third-party vendor. So, and most of the folks that we've spoken to in the room prefer a third-party vendor for some of the reasons that you expressed. Storage, how long it should be stored, who should be storing it. Each, there are various policies that speak to strings for three months, six months. There are some folks who think it should be a year or even permanent. So all these things we have to consider. I will say also on the penalties. So probably, as we've been discussing, there are some policies that articulate penalties. And so folks have their own ideas about what penalties would look like, that may not necessarily express in the policy that we received. So these are things we'll definitely consider. And so it's good to hear your thoughts, your concerns, and we'll bring those back to make sure that they're a part of the conversation. Thank you.
In your community, does it have many people from Yellowstone, do they?
So the, this committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, it consists of all the councils. So there are voting members, and of course, many committees, but every member of the Boston City Council is a member of this committee.
And what I mean by this is, a man can never tell, a woman wants to have a baby, will always miss something. You, the police would never tell you what it's like to feel being abused, because he hasn't been abused. So as you go along, I encourage you, these people with the conspiracy theory, they can live with the police on your console, that they can tell you what it's really like, because what you're hearing is not always the truth. It's been filled with four, five, thousand paperwork. I've, I've experienced a lot of experience with mental health and drug addiction. And I've been covered, and I come back to help people. And I found that the people that read the books are limited to their knowledge of what's between their minder. They don't have that understanding, that fear of having a burden to put in their head. And that makes a difference when you're making a policy, and you don't understand what it feels like to be on the other end.
I will say this, the purpose of doing those community meetings outside of this building and in community was to get at just that, to actually give different perspectives on what it means to engage with police, to also give perspective from officers. So some of the community meetings, we have officers also attend, some of whom are undercover. So we will say, so I will say, the purpose of these community meetings is to get at these experiences. And so we will continue to do that. There will be another hearing, we'll have more robust conversation, and we will continue to let you know, and that is, stay in touch with us, we'll let you know sooner than later.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. So in an effort to be respectful of folks' time, I'm gonna wrap up, and I'm gonna give it up, Counselor Chair Jackson and Counselor Preston, if you want to say a few words, before we wrap up. Counselor Jackson?
Thank you so much. I'm here, I would request that our experience in some places in the community, because I think you make a really good point, related to the fact that these warm, or actually, not so warm walls in Seattle, maybe, may seem like a world away for individuals in the community. So I would request that we, I would something out, that we actually boost this in the community. I would say, I want to thank Carl, I want to thank, Ashley is from the NWCP, I want to thank some kind of, from the, from BPCAT. I think one of the things that we really need to gain some liquid about doing is ensuring all of these voices are activated. We have an opportunity to do, since we're not the first, we can definitely be the best relative to the implementation here. We are a city that actually is a leading technology state, a leading technology city. We have a part of the city that's actually even referred to as the Innovation District. Innovation can't exist only in a bubble. It actually should permeate the city of Boston, and should permeate our police department. And as Brother spoke, I think it's critical that we have as many people at the table. I think it's also critical that we have some folks from the police department at the table. And as noted, I think this is a policy that we need to actually bring forward in connection with the department, because as noted, we will have to change, and this is a bargaining table issue. Our council does not participate in that, but I think it is very important that folks are at the table. I think there's a lot that we can learn relative to the Campaign Zero, the jointcampaignzero.com, there's a lot of this information that's actually already out there relative to, it is my thought, there's, there should be no rewind button on the camera, right? So, and the information should be external to the police department and available to the Civil Review Board, boards, or the DA. I think that's a good way to go about doing this. But I think it's really critical that we actually roll our shoes up and are speaking about specific decisions that we need to make. We know that decision points that actually have to happen. We months, nine months, a lifetime, let's figure those actual specific decision points out that have to be made. I don't believe, we're not reinventing the wheel here. Again, the city of Boston has, really, we haven't had dash claims. There was a whole show called Cops, it was on for twenty years, and we didn't have dash claims for most of that time. It's about time that we step our game up in this space and really move towards twenty-first century policing and having the level of accountability. And as noted before, this isn't only for the community. There have been several times where police have been exonerated outside. When we look at the budget that we had, thirty-seven million dollars, I believe that record been last time I was here, thirty-eight million dollars is a lot of money. And that's essentially our budget, because that's what we've already spent in the past seven years. We should not spend that additional dollars, and we should not, should not prolong this. Let's get started, let's figure this out. We are a city that is known for leading and not following. It's time for us to step up in our leadership capacity and move forward as a city, as a community, as a police department, and help hold the police department accountable, and really open the eyes of transparency on policing in the city of Boston. I look forward to our next hearing, and as I noted, my request would be that we do it someplace outside of the other walls of Seattle.
Counselor Preston?
You're welcome. So I also just want to, you know, commend Counselor Jackson for putting this forward and in committee chair, for making sure that we are in community in these discussions and actively listening, you know, to the point that's already been made, but it does bear repeating, you know, we struggle to make sure that we're now recycling the voices that we hear from, the perspectives that we bring to the table. But not just that we're listening, but that we are then honoring those recommendations. I do think it is necessary that we move deliberate urgency here, and I appreciate that people keep using the word robust, being deliberate, being intentional. I have to remind people that in government, you know, we are not venture capitalists. This is not a startup. This is about people's lives, and so we want to make sure that we get this right and that it is responsible. And, you know, I do just want to say that I've seen a great shift in how we talk about this. I think in the beginning, as we were considering this ordinance, I felt that we were in rooms that were very defensive on both sides. How are you defining those sides? And, you know, at the end of the day, this is not to say that there has not been progress made in the city of Boston. This is an acknowledgement that we are in some ways better than we used to be, but still not what we can be. And this is an opportunity for us to get there through law change, through, through policy change, through culture shift. So this isn't about being anti-officer or pro anything or anyone other than being pro progress and healing. And, you know, the last thing that I would say before we do some shout-outs as well is that, you know, one of my favorite quotes from Dr. King said that, you know, laws don't change hearts, but they can restrain the reckless. You know, and that really is so very true. And so I just want to, in our efforts to do exactly that, I want to acknowledge the contribution and the sweat equity of so many social justice organizations and individuals in this room, BPCAT, the NWCP, ACLU, the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights, and all of you that make your business to be here today, and that are watching online on television. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Preston, and thank you, Counselor Jackson. So like I said in the beginning, we'll obviously have another hearing. We'll make sure that we do it sooner than later. It's budget season, so we have to be respectful of all of the hearings that are currently on the calendar. We'll make sure that we will have representation now from the Social Justice Task Force, so people will know who these folks are, also from BPD. And I will say this, as Chair of Public Safety and Criminal Justice, it was very important that we get out to community to hear folks' experiences, to bring not only what we're doing down here out to the community, but more importantly, to listen to community. I think, as much as I have respect for all the policies that I've received, the ACLU, the BPCAT's policy, and many others, and I've actually reviewed them closely, I still felt like there were some voices missing. And so the intention behind the three community meetings, and the intention behind the community meetings was to get more of those voices and to make sure that they too were a part of the policy discussions. We will continue in that stead, we will continue in that regard. And I will say, thank you for all the folks who came out today. If you want to stick around, you have other things you want to share with us, please do, we are here. We will let you know when we have a follow-up hearing. Thank you again, this hearing is adjourned.